Hi, Michael. Can you hear me?
Hey, Robert. This is actually Ted. Can you hear me?
Hi, Ted. Sorry, your mask. Okay, good. I just want to make sure that you guys can hear me. I'm gonna go back on mute. Thank you.
Okay, great. Yeah.
Good morning.
We, we, good morning. We had a little last minute switch up. Michael was out sick, so I am sitting at his desk and hopefully I'll be able to figure this out.
Okay, well, let him know that. Hope he feels better.
Yeah, no, thank you. I will.
Thanks.
Good morning, Richard. Morning, Naomi.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Michael was out sick today, so hopefully I'll be able to figure out how to assist this morning without any hiccups.
I'm sure you'll rise to the occasion.
Let's see. Morning, Dwight.
Good morning.
How are you?
Not too bad. How are you?
Good. Just want to make sure that we can hear everyone. Hey, guys. Bill Bernie Lucas. Good morning.
Good morning, Ted.
Good morning, Michael.
Actually, Ted's in place of Michael today. Michael's out sick and actually home too, so Ted's in the office running this, driving the car.
Bill.
Hey, Ted, I'm just testing. You can hear me, right?
I can hear you. Yep.
Great, thank you.
All right, it looks like we have James Art. Good morning.
Morning.
Morning, Norma.
Good morning. Ted, did you see the request from the village of Maranick?
Uh, yeah, actually, I was looking at it right now, so.
Okay.
Yeah, no problem. I can get back to him this morning. Yep.
Okay, good. Thank you. How are you, Dwight?
Good. Can't complain. Happy New Year to everybody.
To you as well, yes.
Good morning. Happy New Year.
Good morning, Holly. Happy New Year. I see Bernie is on. Kathy O'Connor is in.
We have a quorum, just FYI.
Thanks, y'all.
It's a very quiet meeting.
Kathy, be careful what you wish for.
I just had to say that.
It's fine, but, but Richard, whenever you're ready, you ask like you have a quorum, so.
Good morning, Kathy. Yep, yep. Have you finished at the dam?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
No, no more lights at the dam.
Oh, there's always lights at the dam, but yes, winter wonderland is over. Praise the Lord.
That was huge. Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, Richard, we can hear you.
Okay, so I went over the meeting dates. Now we're at the adoption of the minutes. And I have one correction.
All right, hold, hold on, Richard. You have to call, we didn't hear you call the meeting to order, so go ahead. Why don't you start over?
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting of the Westchester County Planning Board of January 5th, 2021 to order. The first item on the agenda is the meeting dates for the next three meetings, February 2nd, March 2nd, April 6th, open at 8:30 a.m. Next, we have adoption of the minutes of the December meeting. I have one modification on page five of the minutes. The, the fifth paragraph down starts out, Mr. Hyman stated, the next sentence I'd like to amend uh, by taking out the word while and start with the cluster arrangement is preferable. Then and, stated development should follow current zoning in terms of number of units. So I wanted to make that clear, that I, that the cluster was preferable, but they should not exceed the number of units permitted under the current zoning. Are there any other corrections or additions to the minutes? Hearing none, can I have a motion to minutes as amended?
So moved.
Okay, wait. Sec, okay, second. Daniel? Uh, okay, Bill, call the roll.
James Art?
Yes.
Robert Barron?
Yes.
Dwight Douglas?
Yes.
I didn't see, oh, Daniel Finger?
Yes.
Hamena Franchella? Didn't see Hamena yet. Holly Hasbrook?
Yes.
Richard Hyman?
Yes.
Bernie Tomes?
Yes.
Reenie Toback? I saw you there, Reenie. I'll come back around. Finsico Piki, I think I saw Nat Federici for DEF?
Yes.
Kathy O'Connor?
Yes.
And Hugh Grecian, I think I saw Gail Katzman there.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Um, Richard, can we just have Bill establish the quorum on the record? That's all. Because I don't, normally we start with that and we didn't do that.
Go ahead, Bill.
All right, I've got one, two, three, four, one, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. I've got 11. I want to stop 10 minute right now.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you.
We have a quorum. Okay, chairman's remarks. First of all, Happy New Year to everyone. Uh, maybe sometime this year we'll actually get together in person for a meeting, uh, which would be nice. I hope everyone as well. I just have one comment. If you remember, a couple of months ago, the county, someone has to mute, please. There's a lot of background noise. Uh, at the county planning board had to give approval to Con Edison to trim trees under the uh, high tension lines off of the Spraybrook Parkway. We took a vote and we gave them approval with certain conditions about trimming, uh, lesser trimming closer to the parkway to, so that wouldn't, the whole open area wouldn't be visible. And we also had a big discussion about the overall tree trimming on local municipal streets. Uh, a month or so ago, the Con Ed representatives came in. We made our case. They said what they had to say, but they also said they would get back to us on several issues. They have not gotten back to us, which is, I guess, not unusual. Um, and in fact, uh, at yesterday, at one uh, press uh, meeting, the county executive was saying that since the county represents only 10% of the Con Ed uh, customers, uh, the county has to put a little extra oomph in terms of trying to get the, the full recognition by Con Edison of our issues. And it seems to me we should follow up, the planning department should send another letter to Con Ed reminding them that they promised they would respond to our issues on tree trimming and have yet to do so.
Okay, Richard, to that point, um, I will let you know that I did actually send an email to Jane Solnik, the director of government relations, um, the Monday before Christmas, so I want to say December 21st, reminding her that she had, you know, um, agreed that she would follow up on that letter, that the county planning board was still waiting for a response and that you were having a meeting today. Uh, so, you know, so I have done some follow up, but at this point, I think we'll just send another, a second formal letter.
I think that's a good idea. Okay, next, commissioners' remarks.
So, good morning, everyone. I want to echo, um, Richard's comments about Happy New Year and, and welcome to the, you know, the start of a new year. Um, I will tell you that on a personal note, I ended 2020 with some really good news. If you can see my prop that I'm holding up. I became a grandmother, uh, when, the Wednesday, December 30th, so the Wednesday before, uh, the end of the year. So my son and his wife had a baby boy up in Albany, um, Sebastian Louis Drummond. Uh, so I'm very excited, you know, becoming a grandmother for the first time, although I feel a lot older. So, um, but, but getting back to, to county business here, I did just want to take a, a minute or two to update you on what's going on with COVID, because it certainly impacts all that's going on in the county. Um, so we do have a daily, uh, conference call from the emergency operations perspective of, to deal with what's going on with COVID on a daily basis. Um, the emergency operations center is actually activated and has been since around Thanksgiving time, uh, to where we've had these daily calls, you know, pretty much since then. Um, there, the county executive is going to be holding a There, the county executive is going to be holding a discussion about COVID, he holds briefings now, he's back to doing them twice a week. If you saw his briefing yesterday, the number of active cases is almost 10,000 active cases in the county. So as he said, we are back to the numbers where we were in April, so that's, it's definitely not good news. But, you know, we are watching closely about the hospital capacity, you know, some of our hospitals have already canceled elective surgeries, not that they had to for hospital capacity, but, you know, by their own doing. But we're looking at things from making sure we have enough personal protective equipment, you know, on hand, the distribution of vaccinations, following the state's guidelines, and to the extent that possible that we have a role in that, again, you know, there, I guess, was a little bit of confusion yesterday about whether Westchester Medical Center was a public hospital or not, which it's not. So, you know, and even unfortunately, fatality planning, because that does impact sites like Grasslands and, you know, our labs and research, the coroner's office, and where to store, you know, unfortunately, some of the bodies, so it's definitely, it has an impact on us, we participate in these calls, again, listening what's going on, social services, making sure that all the folks who are in our homeless shelters are also protected as well, so we will continue to watch this, you know, as I mentioned, there are just so many angles to the whole issue that, and how it impacts Westchester. Certainly the angles about keeping our businesses afloat, the eviction prevention issues. You know, like I said, there's a whole bunch, even food distribution and food insecurity has become, you know, a major issue that the planning department had to assist with in the last couple of months of the year last year. So, we will continue to watch this, I will keep you updated as necessary. But like I said, the county executive does do briefings twice a day, they are quite interesting to watch, if you ever, you know, have the opportunity to do that. And I did just want to remind you that your February meeting is really our busiest meeting of the year, that's where the Community College comes in, that's where we do our annual CDVG update for you. So if you could just make every effort to be available for the February meeting and plan that it might just go a little bit longer than normal, we would appreciate that. So that's it from me, Richard.
Thank you, Norma, and Mazel Tov. Referrals, ratification of actions taken by staff in response to planning and zoning actions referred to the County Planning Board, November 16th, 2020 through December 15th, 2020. Does anyone have any comments on any of the referrals?
Richard, this is Holly, I have to recuse myself from the Broad Street, the Portchester Broad Street Owner LLC referral. And I do have some questions about the North Castle referral for the Armont Close. Does Lucas, or does anyone have any inside information on that one?
I don't have any inside information.
They're asking for a reduction in affordable units. It's only 36 units to begin with, but I guess they're asking for a reduction from 20% to 10%? Okay, I can speak to this one. So this is a development that has been long in dispute in the town. It was a development that was approved originally under the town's original zoning of the middle income units, and the developer received a density bonus to get to the number of 36 units. And, you know, in exchange for that density bonus, he agreed to do 20% of the units as affordable. He then disputed whether he needed to do that or not, and then the town adopted the affirmatively, the model ordinance provisions for affirmatively furthering fair housing, which adopted a 10% requirement, so that gave the developer further challenge as to why he was required to do the 20%. I believe he was kind of conveniently forgetting that he had received the density bonus. So that, I believe what the town is going to, allowing now is allow him to reduce his site plan requirements, eliminating the density bonus, so going back to what he would normally have been allowed to, which then requires only the 10% of the units to be affordable. Okay, I was going to ask if we could suggest that the other units be built in another location, perhaps, but I don't know if that is if that is, would apply now that he doesn't have the density bonus.
Actually.
That's the, that's the issue, is he doesn't, he no longer has that, he no longer has the extra issue, so the development itself is being reduced. Right, right.
Also, just to let, I think most members know, but the Housing Opportunity Commission has come out with a policy recommendation opposed to putting affordable housing on sites other than the building that includes the market rate units, to avoid separating out affordable units and segregating them from market units. So that, that's not a position that we would recommend, as the Housing Opportunity Commission has not recommended.
Right, okay.
Any other comments on the referrals?
Just, this is Dwight, just following up on Holly's, the issues with 20% going down to 10%. We could do a little exploration into this. Can, is it still feasible? What's the point at which the percent set aside for affordable housing perhaps makes the project unfeasible? So we were having discussion in Peekskill about the model ordinance, and some of our, my colleagues are interested in having a higher percent than 10%. And I've kind of been dragging along on that, thinking we really, and the market conditions in Peekskill are very different from other parts of Westchester, as to whether whether we inadvertently stop development by going up from 10 to 20%, even with a bonus density. So we've been looking at this, we're not settled. Rose Noonan is doing some work for us to help us understand all the issues, but it really is kind of a market analysis. What absorption can you have and still have a feasible project? And so I, we would prefer a higher percent, but I would prefer not to stop development. So this is kind of an interesting test case where they're sacrificing the bonus density to go just to 10%. And that tells you a little something, anyway, something to think about.
Dwight, when I drafted the the report on office parks and to build housing in office parks over 10 years ago, I worked with planning staff to come up with, you know, just what you were talking about, and we felt at that time, which is like 12 years ago, that 15% was doable. 15% was sort of the, the point at which up to that, you could, the developer could make money, after that, it got a little bit tighter. But that was 12 years ago, and probably would be useful to do that exercise again.
That would be very useful, if that's a report that exists, it'd be great to get a copy of that somehow or other, just help us with our discussion.
Yeah, it's on the webs, it's on the website, but we used the 15%, but we didn't do, we didn't include the whole background analysis is how we ended up at 15%.
Okay. Thanks.
And it's old, so it would be good to do it again. Any other comments on the referrals?
Yeah, I have some comments on the referrals. A lot of, a good number of these have no unit set aside. And I was interested in this one in Greenberg, I'm not sure if this is the same one we looked at last month?
Yeah.
Oh, it is, okay, because I was wondering how it could possibly be that another person was going to build a three-story unit with three bedrooms for older adults. Yeah, and is there any legislation or anything requiring affordable housing in the purchase?
Still, Hararson has not adopted the model ordinance.
Okay, so, but I still think that's a little bit, you know, a little bit of a stretch there.
Now, that said, we have worked with certain, several developers in Harrison to actually include affordable units within the developments that they are constructing. So Chol Brothers, right now at the Caraway, has included 42 units of affordable housing, 21 of them are at 60% of AMI, and 21 of them are at 80% of AMI. And there's another developer, oh, they at at the train station, that developer included 5% of the units as affordable. And the county actually bought down the affordability from 80% of AMI, because that's what he originally agreed to. We bought it, we got down to 60% of AMI. So some of the developers have started with the affordable units in Harrison, but the town itself has not adopted the model ordinance, they were reminded by the executive with a letter in November to adopt the model ordinance, so we are continuing to remind the municipalities that have not yet adopted it about the model ordinance.
And this, the one, Renee, you brought up, in the town of Greenberg, Greenberg had one of the first 10% set aside ordinances in the county. However, this particular development is not considered multifamily housing, it's considered single-family housing, and that's the loophole that this developer is trying to get around.
Okay, and I also noticed that we have, and that was mentioned, on the Mount Kisco development, that they have no way of dealing with the storm water, and that one of the ones in Harrison is in a flood zone. And I understand that though it's in a flood zone, that the, in the one in Harrison, that it would be elevated above the surface, but this is still a danger to the flood zone. I mean, this is still building over it, this is still has drainage issues.
Two referrals, the first one in Mount Kisco, that one was kind of perplexing, because they had had on their site plan a, a large lawn in front of the building, and they were showing subsurface stormwater management infrastructure underneath that lawn, which doesn't make a lot of sense. So we told them that they should, because they were going to use the lawn for walking paths and whatnot, so we recommended that they consider above-ground stormwater management treatment measures like rain gardens, or even a tension basin or whatnot, that they could just have the, the walking path just go around, they would do like a landscaping amenity that the walking path could just encircle. So that was, that was a kind of a strange plan. With, with respect to the Harrison referral, that, that came under the purview of our, of the county's drainage engineer, because that impacted Blind Brook and that's a county stream. So the, the county drainage engineer, he wrote us extensive comments about that, about how that development would need to work to not impact the Blind Brook, and they would also have to get a permit from our Public Works and Transportation Department to do the work. So there's an extra level of safeguarding over that particular referral.
All right. And the other one that I had a comment, which was this one in Yonkers. You did comment that they need to include some discussion about the beeline service, but I think they also have to include some comment about public asset, public access to the riverfront there. There is this tendency, which is ongoing, to completely wall off the riverfront area with no public access.
Okay, right, so this particular referral was for a scoping document for, for an EIS that's going to come to us as a referral later. So when we crafted the comments for the scoping document, we really just responded just to that. So if there, the scoping document was relatively complete, like they, they covered most of the topics that we would want to see in an EIS. The, the only thing that we, we kind of caught when we reviewed it was the fact that they weren't, they weren't discussing these county services that we're responsible for, like the INI mitigation and the beeline buses, so that's why the comment letter was just limited to that. You know, those other topics were included in the scoping document.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that's why we didn't comment on them, but when the EIS comes in, if they're walling off that, that waterfront, you know, we're going to have substantial comments about that, we just need to see it first.
This, this would be the biggest project in the history of Westchester, 4,000 apartments.
And it's actually, it's actually a redo of projects that we've already reviewed. Two of the three components of this project have already come in as referrals in the past. They were already approved, now they're just coming again, but with changes.
And they're going all the way back to scoping?
Correct, yeah, I guess the changes are substantial enough, they're adding a couple of stories to a couple of the buildings. The Chicken Island project is substantially different. I mean, if you remember initially, it had like a minor league baseball stadium on the roof, but that's not part of the project. You know, so there's, there's changes to it, but yeah, I guess, and then they're adding that third site on North Broadway, so I guess they decided they wanted to go through the, undertake the EIS process again.
Developer?
Yes, yeah, it's a different developer entirely.
Yeah, so that's probably. Okay, any other questions on, comments on the referrals? If not, can I have a motion to?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Jimena.
Go on, Jimena.
Yes, also, two comments in regard to affordable housing. I was wondering if the trend right now, where we're seeing there's more of a pushback in regard to having affordable housing, and the other was that I was very pleasantly pleased to see that we're getting more projects like the Hemlock Hills floor farm, which is in regard to green energy, and I was wondering if this group could also monitor the success of these new projects and see how they're doing once they're implemented. To the affordable housing. Somebody needs to mute themselves, please. We have not seen a reduction in affordable housing and/or a pushback against it per se. In fact, we are actually, you know, we've now had multiple months in a row where we've been bringing affordable housing developments to your board for approvals, so we're, you know, the good news is, again, with a county executive that is so supportive of affordable housing, that, you know, and he's not afraid to go and speak to the municipalities and remind them that we're all in this together and tie it to economic development, and, you know, I'm still going out doing needs assessments, presentations to the municipalities. So I honestly can't tell you that I'm seeing any pushback per se or any reduction in affordable housing, so. And then the Hemlock Hills, the, there, I know David is watching and, you know, gave comments on that letter. And, you know, making sure because of the development rights issue that the county has on that property, you know, to make sure that the, we'll be watching that one as well, so.
Okay, thank you, if there are no other comments, can we have a motion to adopt the referrals?
So moved.
Thank you, Dwight, we have a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, James. Can Bill call the roll?
James Art?
Yes.
Robert Baron? Dwight Douglas?
Yes.
Daniel Finger?
Yes.
Jimena Franchella?
Yes.
Holly Hasbrook?
Yes.
Richard Hyman?
Yes.
Bernie Tomes?
Yes.
E. Toback?
Yes.
Nat Federici for Vincent Copicki?
This is Vincent, yes.
Oh, Vincent, good morning, thank you. Kathy O'Connor?
Yes.
And Hugh Grecian? Or Gail Katzman?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, referral of interest, Ardsley 21001, Village of Ardsley Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, just bear with me a second, we had a slight technical issue. Okay. Can everyone see this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great, okay, perfect. Okay, so this being a new year,
Okay, great. Okay, perfect. Okay, so this being a new year, we have already started receiving, you know, some, a number of referrals, and since this is the first year of the new decade, we start with the letter A, and we have, the Village of Ardsley has just sent us a draft comprehensive plan for us to take a look at. Just real quick about Ardsley, the planning issues that they're currently facing, they have a comprehensive plan that's one of the oldest in the county. It dates back to nineteen sixty-four. The village is mostly built out and it's mostly single-family residential. And you can see in this chart here that's in the lower right-hand corner, most of this construction happened around the time of the nineteen sixty-four plan. So perhaps that's why the village has not updated it more recently, in the sense that, you know, they say in the current plan update that a lot of the stuff that's in the nineteen sixty-four plan is actually still relevant to today, since so much of the development occurred at that time. Just, you know, for context, in the last ten years, we've only received thirty-seven referrals from the village, so they're not one of the major referral contributors to the county planning board. Of those thirty-seven, at least more than half were just local determination or notification referrals. I went through and I discounted over the last ten years, we received about five referrals from Ardsley that have been somewhat substantial, where we generated, you know, like a two-page letter that has comments on it. So, so not a whole lot coming from Ardsley, but the plan update identifies assets and challenges that the village would like to take a look at. So first, the assets, the village, the comprehensive plan talks about how the village has a high-quality school district, a relatively affluent population. They receive, the residents receive good utilities and municipal services from the village. And the other defining feature that the plan talks about of the village is that it has good access to recreational and sports facilities. There are two large parks at each end of the village. One is a county park, VE Macy Park. The other one is a village park. Both have a large number of sports fields that are available to different teams and to the public. Ardsley also is unique in that they have a large indoor sports facility called the House of Sports, which was referred back to us in twenty-eleven, and we reviewed it back then. And it's a large indoor sports facility. So they have a lot of these playing fields and facilities relative to other municipalities. The challenges that were highlighted in the plan, there is a concern about underutilized commercial areas within the village, like the central business district in particular. Some of the public spaces that the village has constructed over the years have not been utilized. There's a concern about a lack of connectivity, both in terms of non-motorized transportation, like pedestrians and cyclists, but also just a barrier to the entrance of the central business district for everyone, including for drivers. Also, the plan notes that Ardsley is encumbered by a lot of steep slopes. You can see in the picture, in the graphic in the upper right-hand corner, Ardsley has two valleys on each side of it. On the west side is the Sawmill River, and on the east side is the Spring Brook. In between are two plateaus that kind of have a lot of slopes, steep slopes associated with it, which, you know, kind of can hinder development. Also, each of the two waterways has a significant floodplain area associated with it. And this is kind of problematic for the downtown central business district, in the sense that almost the entire central business district is within the hundred-year floodplain. So these are the challenges identified by the plan. In setting up the plan, real quick about the methodology of putting it together, it started in twenty-seventeen, so it's been going on for just over three years. They had a number of public workshops and charrettes. They did a survey with the community. There was a steering committee that directed the direction of the plan. While they were putting the comprehensive plan together in draft form, the, the village worked on two studies that kind of corresponded with the comprehensive plan. The first was the Sawmill River Revitalization Plan, which was more of an environmental, environmentally focused plan concerning the Sawmill River, stormwater management, flooding, things like that. They also did a market analysis and development strategy that mostly focused on the central business district and the shopping center areas to the north along Route nine A. These two studies kind of formed like the base studies for the, the rest of the plan, and they're included in the plan in the appendix section. So the plan is set up with five different chapters, and these chapters, each of these chapters forms an implementation plan that's at the end of the plan. So this, unlike a more traditional comprehensive plan that has, you know, it's, has maybe eight to twelve chapters loaded with charts and maps and tables and figures, this is a more policy-based plan, where it's mostly text. The, each chapter informs a series of implementation strategies, and it's mostly left to that. The previous studies that I mentioned before, Sawmill River Revitalization Plan and the market analysis, they have a lot of the information that you might see in a more traditional plan, like the, like the, like that table that I just showed you with the, the year of home construction. That was from the market analysis. A lot of the mapping about the environmental features is contained in the Sawmill River Revitalization Plan. So those plans kind of form the, the base study information, and then the five chapters I'm about to go through with you have more of the policy-based stuff that forms, that informs the implementation plan. So real quick, with the, the first chapter is the Provide Chapter. This is mostly about the village's fiscal health, the, the public health of the residents, and the delivery of municipal services. So with the, the goals and implementation that the, the plan recommends, basically, they want to start reviewing and update, reviewing and updating the entire village code. They want to keep on a timetable where they revise the comprehensive plan every ten years. They would like to look at developing policies to accommodate aging in place. They want to look at developing more public gathering spaces. And then with more specific, those are more generalized recommendations, but more, moving to more specific things, they want to move the public work facility to a new location on Heatherdale Road, and as well as improve access to the eastern bank of the Sawmill River. So having looked at these recommendations, we thought of one more, that maybe the plan could reference our county DEF's policy about implo and infiltration mitigation for new projects. You know, we've seen that a lot of municipalities have been gone to incorporate that policy into their planning documents, or even into their zoning, so this might be a good time for the village to, to look at doing that. The next chapter is called Strengthen. This is about revitalizing problems, properties in the village, activating village assets that the village owned a particular property, and maybe that could be useful for revitalization purposes, and also taking a look at the central business district and commercial areas. So the particular goals and implementation strategies are to create a streamlined review process for the central business district. Perhaps the review process currently is too long or too onerous, perhaps variances are needed for a lot of developments, so they want to take a look at that. There's a hope to, to leverage village-owned properties for private development, perhaps through agreements with selected developers. And the idea of creating a business improvement district, getting the local merchants together in the downtown, they pay a fee for the creation of a central, of a business improvement district that can deal with the upkeep of the downtown area. Also, they are considering a marketing and branding initiative to get the word out about Ardsley. The idea would be that it could incorporate the concepts of health, wellness, and fitness. As I mentioned before, Ardsley has a higher-than-average number of, of sports facilities compared to its population. So perhaps incorporating that concept would be a good marketing initiative for them. Also, the idea of calling Ardsley a trail town, and leveraging the county's, South County Trailway that goes through the center of the village, as a way to encourage trail-oriented businesses. And it's important to point out that the House of Sports, for example, that was built directly next to the South County Trailway. When we, when we reviewed that referral in twenty-eleven, we noted that they were not making their business trail-oriented. They had a fence separating the trail from the building. There was no way to get from the trail to the building. There was no bike parking. We made those comments, and they revised the plan to include those. So this would formalize that, that concept, and hopefully new development. We wouldn't have to go through that. They would already design the buildings to be trail-oriented. The Connect Chapter talks a lot about improving and increasing bicycle and pedestrian facilities and safety within the village. There is, it's acknowledged in the plan that while the trailway, the South County Trailway goes through the center of the village, it's very difficult to get from that trailway to the downtown area. And this chapter explores that and tries to come up with strategies to improve that connectivity, particularly with the central business district. There's also a discussion about improving access to transit. Ardsley has about, I think, five different beeline bus routes go through Ardsley. So improving access to transit is desirable. Also, it's interesting that they're talking about reducing vehicle miles traveled. This is a concept that doesn't always make it into local planning documents, but it's nice to see that they're focusing on getting people out of their cars a little bit, maybe using walking or biking as a way to get around the village, or transit, of course. Also, the, the plan talks about the need for more parking, particularly in the central business district. But with the desire for more parking, there's also a desire to have it located in the situation where it has better access and located more appropriately, not, not along the street, but behind buildings so that it's screened from view, but still easily available for drivers to park their cars. So getting into the, the implementation goals, in this particular chapter, we noted that the implementation plan offers actions that are either very, very generalized or very, very specific, with not a lot in between. So there's a generalized goal to enhance sidewalk conditions, trail access, and pedestrian connectivity. And then there's also a generalized goal to increase road safety and implement traffic calming. But there's no specific information given about either. Then later on, there's specific goals about, like, well, they're, they want an additional access point to VE Macy Park, or they say that they want a, a more of a pedestrian walkway or trailway along the eastern side of the Sawmill River. But not a lot of specific information is listed with that. So one recommendation that we have for them to perhaps consider is that maybe they should also take a look at doing a standalone bike ped plan, or consider a complete streets policy, or consider perhaps a bicycle parking ordinance that can be done as a standalone bike ped plan that can then be incorporated later into this comprehensive planning document, that could really kind of drill down and, and focus on the precise changes that they would like to make. Also, the implementation plan calls for some county involvement, but the details are not really there for us to analyze. For example, as I mentioned before, they, the plan calls for a continuous pathway along the east bank of the Sawmill River and asks for county involvement. But the county's only ownerships along that eastern bank is VE Macy Park, and there's already a pathway there. So it's not clear what they want to do, or how the county would be involved. They also talk about enhancements to the South County Trailway. You can see in these, in these pictures, there was the, the current South County Trailway and potential trailway enhancements, but, you know, there wasn't a lot of information given about that, who would undertake the work, et cetera. Just that it's desirable that they would like to do that. They also had a generic statement in the plan about enhancement of commuter shuttle services. So beeline currently runs, I think it's like two or three commuter shuttle loops that service certain neighborhoods that then connect to the Hartdale Train Station. So the plan says that there is a desire to enhance these services, but no information is provided about what they want to do. With the parking, there was a little more information about this. They definitely have stated that they want to expand parking opportunities in the central business district. This was a rendering that was in the, the marketing study. This is not a formal proposal or anything like that, but this is just a conceptual idea of what the village might be looking to do by providing a large parking structure behind some of the existing businesses in the downtown. But at the same time, the, the document also talks about using strategies to reduce parking demand. For example, employing shared parking in the zoning ordinance, perhaps requiring transportation demand management plans for certain larger-scale development projects. Also, the plan recommends reducing off-street parking requirements for certain developments, kind of, I guess, reexamining the, the parking, the parking regulations, and maybe looking for ways that parking could be reduced for certain uses. The Build Chapter, this is probably the most significant chapter in terms of our review, in, in the sense that it talks a lot about zoning and changes to the zoning. So this chapter, the, the idea is that they would like to maintain the existing residential zoning districts, for the most part, as they are, but then expand the permitted uses in the commercial districts. So this could include adding residential uses to the commercial districts, which are currently prohibited, like in the downtown, the central business district, for example. Broadening the number and types of commercial uses that are permitted, like one example is that you've probably noticed that a lot of downtown areas now have breweries or brew, brewery pub-type restaurants. Those are prohibited in Ardsley, so perhaps adding that to the list of uses could spur development. They also want to take a look at form-based regulations for the central business district, which is following a trend that a number of municipalities here have already gone through. Also, there's a desire to protect historic and cultural resources, which I'll get to in a little bit. So for the implementation plan, as I mentioned, a form-based zoning code is seen as desirable, perhaps, for the central business district, by adding higher-density residential and mixed-use buildings to the, to the downtown area. This is just a rendering, the picture above is a, of vacant garage building that's in the central business district, and below is an idea of what could potentially be developed there under a form-based code. There's also a desire to update the commercial sign regulations, which haven't been looked at in a long time, perhaps undertake a facade improvement program to spruce up some of the buildings through grants or funding. And then also, the, the thought is to formalize the gateway to the central business district, perhaps using thematic signage, special landscaping, monuments, lighting, electronic kiosks, public art, just a wide variety of ideas that could be employed to kind of formalize the entrance to the, the central business district. With that, there is also a desire to undertake a conceptual plan to improve Adamant Square, which is right in the center of the downtown central business district. Right now, if you go there, there's like mostly just parking. There's a, like a clock that you can, that's kind of sits in the center of it. And the idea is to maybe make it into more of a public space by reducing some of the parking and making it easier to get in, in and out of. The idea is that if, if you look in the, the picture here, if you went into that, that little public space they want to create, you could get a nice view of the Sawmill River Flood Control Project, which is located just behind that. And that maybe with these, by increasing the activity in public spaces that can maybe, maybe done, increased even further by adding things like food trucks or bike rental businesses, signage, street furniture, et cetera, to kind of better activate these spaces. Also, with this chapter, there's a consideration to allowing additional development in the shopping centers along Route nine A. If you go north of the central business district, there's a couple of shopping centers that are mostly along the, the east side of nine A. And it's thought that maybe they could play with the zoning to allow different types of redevelopment to occur there. So, for example, maybe looking at increasing the building heights, or allowing, again, for a broader use of, of use categories that could be added to these shopping centers. Also, screening and landscaping is another, is another goal that they want to make them look better. This picture at the bottom of the screen is, this is a shopping center that's currently completely vacant. So this is a good opportunity to maybe employ some of those new strategies to redevelop it with something that works better. When it comes to the existing residential districts, the plan generally talks about keeping these districts the exact same in terms of their geographic boundaries. But I, I suppose, as the village has received a number of variance requests from But I, I suppose as the village has received a number of, um, variance requests from different homeowners seeking to, you know, improve their properties, that there might be an opportunity to, to kind of tweak the dimensional regulations, like if, if, if a certain type of variance keeps having to go to the ZVA over and over again, maybe it's time to kind of look at that so that the, um, property owners don't have to go through that extra level of review. And also, um, when it comes to historical assets, the plan notes that the last time the village kind of really looked at the historical assets in the village in terms of historical buildings or, uh, historical features, it was about, it was in the, in the mid eighties. So there's a, a push to kind of reinventory those historical assets and figure out how to craft regulations to preserve them. Uh, affirmatively furthering stair housing was not specifically discussed in the plan. But it's interesting that the market analysis that's in the appendix of the document recommends adding a density bonus, uh, for downtown developments to increase affordable housing. So that was the consultants who put that, uh, document together kind of keyed into that. And we noted that, um, back in 2012, when, um, Artsley adopted the model ordinance, we noted at that time that they did not incorporate incentive provisions in the, that were, that come with the model ordinance to encourage, uh, the provision of affordable units above the, the standard 10%. So perhaps at this time, it might be a, a good time to remind the village that, you know, a density bonus provision could really help not only, um, you know, in, in terms of encouraging more development, but also getting more affordable, uh, units into the village. Uh, the final chapter is, uh, the protect chapter. This mostly deals with natural resources in sensitive areas like those flood zones or the steep slopes that I mentioned before. Uh, resiliency is a big topic. Um, the plan notes that tropical storm Floyd in 1999 is the current flood of record where the most damage was caused. Uh, the village is already aware that reducing storm water runoff is really key to, to, um, to resiliency and pre- and prevention of these natural disasters. And so they want to take a look at, um, green infrastructure as a way to do that. And so, uh, with the goals and implementation, adding these green building standards, the zoning code is discussed, uh, requiring green infrastructure in all village capital projects. Um, they're also looking at, um, implementing, uh, regulations for electric vehicle charging stations and continuing all the ongoing efforts that they've currently been involved with, with stormwater flooding, hazard mitigation and, and all that. Um, also, there was an idea to create a, uh, best management practices manual for residents, um, as, as well as another effort to increase public awareness and education about environmental and conservation concerns. So that would be done both through that manual and also through the school district, um, reaching out to the, to the kids in the, in the village. And that's, that's basically it for the, the planned document. Um, right now, the village has a public hearing scheduled for January 19th. So we could circulate a letter to, to you, um, you know, uh, in advance of that meeting for, um, your review based on the discussion you have right now.
Thank you, Lucas. Uh, does anybody have any questions regarding the, uh, Artsley Comprehensive Plan?
Just a quick comment, that it seems like a pretty darn good plan. I mean, I, I haven't seen the approach quite like this, but, um, you know, other than the affordable housing, uh, not being clearly stated as, as a goal and, and with the rebuilding in the new building in the central business district and upper floor development of residential, which is incorporated in that, so long as they put in affordable housing component as part of that, it seems pretty good.
Was this, was this done by a consultant?
Uh, I believe so.
I, I think, this is Rob. I, I think, I, I agree with Dwight. I mean, I mean, Artsley's got a lot of problems. A lot of it's based upon the fact that, you know, its downtown was obliterated by, uh, you know, original downtown by, you know, the, the highways. So I think it's really helpful. I, you know, it's, uh, it's a terrifying place to walk and bike. And, you know, there is, you cannot get to park facilities safely, period. So any, any, any change is good. Thank you.
Norma, is there any affordable housing currently in Artsley?
Um, we have definitely done affordable housing in Artsley. I can't say that there's anything we've done recently. Most of the housing that's been, has been like little two units, like Shore, uh, has one of the nonprofits that, uh, you know, operates in this area, the county, has taken a couple homes along 9A and created them into affordable housing opportunities, but we haven't done anything recently.
Water Wheel is the only one that was recently done.
Ah, right.
That was down, but at that point, this point, that's five years ago, Anthony. So, yeah.
No, it's.
Along 9A.
Time flies when you're having fun.
I worked on that one. That's gotta be 10 years ago.
The referral came in in 2011 for Water Wheel.
Yeah.
Yeah. So 10.
Richard. It's Kathy. Could I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Yeah. Um, Lucas, I've also been asked, um, by the county legislator who represents that area. They're looking, uh, over by the Macy on the Sawmill, on Sawmill River Road. They are asking about putting in sidewalks, so giving the people that live in the apartments across the street or anybody have a better access to Macy Field, uh, Macy Park. But, um, I believe that's a state road, correct? That's not county.
Uh, correct. And, and that's why, um, doing a standalone bike ped plan could really help them because it, the state DOT recognizes these local plans, these local bike ped plans. So if Artsley had a plan that said, you know, we want sidewalks specifically along 9A in this location.
Right.
When, when state DOT does work on the road or, you know, they periodically will do this, um, they will make the effort to, to get the sidewalks in if, if they have a plan.
Right. And then one other thing for everybody's edification, um, or information, uh, the next phase of, uh, we just finished the North County Trailway redo, which is in dire, dire need and South County Trail isn't much better. Um, so we are in the, it's a big capital project. It should start, um, sometime hopefully early spring of 2021, so this spring. Um, so it certainly is a time to analyze and, and look at any other thing that could be done, you know, in addition to just literally repaving and all the irrigation and everything else to get it going again. So that could certainly work hand in hand with what you're talking about, Lucas.
Well, Kathy, just, this is Rob Baron again. Um, I had sent you an email a while ago. One of the things that is kind of dangerous for, for accessing the South County Trail for, for Artsley residents is.
Right.
The fact that some of the street crossings could use raised, raised crossings.
Right, right.
So that would be a helpful thing.
Yes, and, and Robert, ironically, I was just looking at your email yesterday and I'm, I'm sorry, I wasn't ignoring it. Again, um, we don't own, uh, Lawrence Street and we don't own those cross streets. So that would be, I believe it's Greenberg. Again, Lucas, if I'm wrong, tell me. Um, I also go crazy over the areas that have been painted, uh, you know, as well as Virginia Road and the BRP and, you know, going forward, and they don't do it obviously in this weather, but going forward, I'm going to be an animal about, you know, making sure, you know, we had a death at North County Trailway and, and I don't think anybody, we were not at fault, which is the good news, but it's still, I, I, I stop at the crossway and, and we have the right of way, but I certainly don't want to smash into anybody. And a lot of people that ride bikes, no offense, Robert, or walk or jog, they just go straight across. It's, it's amazing that they don't stop, uh, because all those areas are heavily trafficked. So yes, Robert, it's, it's certainly a good point. Um, I, I really want to pursue that because I certainly hate to see anybody getting hurt or, or killed by, by cross traffic. So thank you.
Okay, let's, let's move along.
That reminds me of just one thing is the importance of se- separating the pedestrians from the bicycles because a lot of bicyclists do assume they have the right of way. And if there's not a clearly designated space for pedestrians, you can get sideswiped very easily. They expect you to get out of the way and that is not always possible fast enough.
And just so that you know, on the North County Trailway, all signage at each intersection clearly states, and I have pictures of it, clearly states, walk your bike, get off your bike, look for traffic, you know, the whole nine. I mean, all but knocking you off your bike, you know, we're, we're doing everything we can to eliminate that, but, you know, there's still a lot of discussion about people on bikes, people walking, people running. It, it's, you know, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't go away easily, but anyway. And, and, uh, Richard, just, I'm sorry, one other thing, I have a crazy meeting at 10 o'clock, so I'm going to have to go off at 10, uh, 10 of. Um, do you need me for any quorum or do you have a quorum without me for voting?
Uh, we have a quorum. I'd like to get through the next item if we could.
Richard, just, if I could add on to that, Richard, I need to get off at 10 of 10 also. I have a 10 o'clock.
Okay, well then, uh, so let's get quickly to the next item. Just Lucas, you'll send around a, a draft letter on the Artsley Comprehensive Plan, right?
Right, I'll, I'll work on it right away.
Okay, the next item is BPL 30 New Homeland Acquisition, One Dromore Road Housing Development Town of Greenberg. Just one quick question, Lucas, did this ever come before the planning board for site plan? I don't remember.
I don't believe so.
Okay, let's go ahead with this. Len, you can proceed. Len, we can see but not hear.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Now we can.
Okay. All right, and you can see the, uh, okay, great. All right, well, good morning. This is, this is One Dromore Road in the Town of Greenberg. It is, it is the Fair and Affordable Housing Presentation. The next slide, we show the location of One Dromore Road, which is in Scarsdale PO, but it's actually Town of Greenberg. And it's right off, this is, this yellow is Central Avenue. And, uh, this is the Harstale train station and this is the Scarsdale train station, the Bronx River running here and Spring Brook Parkway running right here. So it gives an idea of the location of the proposed development. This is a more closer in view. This is Central Avenue right along here. Dromore Road comes up this way. The site sits right in this, these couple lots right here. To the south of the site is the Fields for Edgemont High School and up in this way is Greenberg Nature Center. As to give a perspective, this is the Metro North Track, the Bronx River Parkway is right here as well. So the development is approximately 2.2 and a quarter acres site. It's a wooded site with, and it's vacant at the moment with no known environmental issues. Some of you may know that this site was the subject of litigation for a number of years between the owner, the current owner and the town of Greenberg. That litigation has been resolved, that affects the site. The, the site does have, it's all approvals are in place, including the site plan, special permanent tree removal approvals. This is just the views of the existing site. As you can see, it, it's pretty much a wooded site. Um, you can see on the bottom picture, that's Dromore Road, the, the, uh, opening down in the bottom picture, that's the, basically the entrance to the site as it stands right now.
Is Dromore Road a public road?
It's a Town of Greenberg Street, yes.
Town of Greenberg Street.
Yep. And then the development consists of a new construction of a four-story building with 45 rental units for families. It has seven one bedrooms, 38 two bedrooms, a total of 96 parking spaces, 46 of these are located under the building. The parking meets the current zoning requirements, which require one and a half spaces per one bedroom unit, two spaces for two bedroom, plus 10% for visitor. So that totals 96 spaces. The site, 50% of the site is being preserved as open space and as amenities, the building will have a community room, lounges on each floor and a fitness room. Environmentally green, it will be LEED certified and Energy Star certified and a solar array will be on the roof. The affordability ranges from 40% to 80% of AMI, which is a pretty good range, 10 units at 40%, 8 at 50, 11 at 60, 8 units at 70 and 7 at 80% and one employee unit, which will be restricted at 80% as well. The, this is just to show the income levels between 40 and 80% for the various households that may live there. And then we have the sources of the proposed sources by the developer, Wilder Walter. They are seeking 9% tax credits in the upcoming round with the, with the state of New York to add, fund the project in approximately 10.66 million. Uh, and then they also are seeking at the same time, same application for housing trust fund from the state of New York of about $3 million. They're seeking county new homes land acquisition of about 85,000 per unit or 3.825 million, which is the contract price that they're under right now, um, with the current seller, the current owner. And then they will have a conventional first mortgage of about 4.8 million and NYSERD is providing 45,000. Total development costs are just shy of 500,000 per unit or 22.326 million. This is the site plan. As you can see, the yellow area is the building and it shows the parking underneath. This is the driveway in from Dromore Road and this is the parking, the, the areas of open space are primarily around the perimeter of the site. And this is the elevation. They unfortunately don't have a better elevation than this, but, uh, this is just what the building is proposed to look like. And I'm happy to answer any questions or any thoughts anybody has.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, very much. I very much like the, uh, range of incomes for this. I think this is, this is, this is very important to, to see that when we do a, a totally affordable housing project, that it has that kind of range of incomes that, that achieves most of our goals, I think.
Um, this is Rob. I think I had asked this in the past, is there a way that we can get the breakout for the amount of like the, the cost of the parking spaces for the, for, for these projects? I'd love to see that.
Are you talking about the cost to the tenant or the cost to construct?
No, the cost to construct. Obviously, I've been told that, that these are all free parking, so, so, uh.
Yeah.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, I, again, don't remember seeing this. I just think this is just a horrible site plan that's generated by the parking requirements that are really ridiculous. Uh, it's almost two for one parking. I mean, it looks, I don't see 50% of the site being open other than, you know, around the edges. And it's just like this building sitting in the middle of a parking lot. I mean, it's, you know, they didn't want to go to the expense of doing structured parking. Okay, it's only 40 some odd units, but with so much parking, the only advantage is, is this is set up on a hill and it's probably not going to be visible from anywhere except the, uh, the nuns up the road. And, uh, to me then, some Gothic architecture might have been nicer than what they're proposing, but, uh, I, I just am disturbed by the architecture and the site plan, but apparently it's all been approved by the local government and we have no say in, in that at this point. We only have a say in terms of using the New Homeland Acquisition Fund and for that purposes, as Dwight says, it is a good project that has a good array of affordability. Any other questions or comments on this?
This is, I, this is Rob. I just want to make one more comment if I may. Um, I, I, um, I sent an email to, um, to Lucas earlier about, um, and Bill about this. Um, I'm just a little, I'm a little concerned. I mean, I'm still going to support this and I know, I know Norma's saying, like I can hear Norma saying, I shouldn't be talking about site plan issues. Um, but I'm a little concerned about the, the ability for people from this site to get to Central Avenue on Dromore Road, which is actually quite narrow with no sidewalk, and then to get across to the southbound bus stop. Um, if there's some way we could sort of dust off Naomi Klein's great 2009 report about Central Avenue and just sort of take a look at that and, and make some comments to the, the, the town board, um, that we just are a little concerned of, that would be nice.
Also, that's fairly, it's a fairly steep hill.
Yeah, Robert. Oh, sorry.
Down to Central Avenue, it's a fairly steep hill.
Robert, as part of their, I forgot to mention, as far as their site plan approvals, they are required to install a sidewalk down to Central Avenue. I won't address the question of getting across Central Avenue, but it at least gets, gets you down the hill. That won't address the question of getting across Central Avenue, but it at least gets, gets you down the hill.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions?
Who's gonna maintain that sidewalk?
Um, I'd have to find out, but.
I assume it's gonna be within the, in the, in the town right of way, but usually it's the local property owners that.
I assume there'll be some kind of easement where they'll have to maintain it.
Have to maintain it.
Typically, the, the adjacent property owner is responsible for maintenance.
Right.
Okay.
And I saw the snow in the pictures. I mean, again, it's a fairly steep hill. Hopefully, uh, the town does a good job of plowing. Any other comments or questions?
Those pictures were taken right after that, the recent, they were there.
Okay, okay, we have a resolution on our agenda. Uh, the New Homeland Acquisition, uh, Capital Project Funding Request for One Dromore Street, the Town of Greenberg. I think there's a copy in your package. So, if I could have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing 3,825,000 from the New Homeland Acquisition Fund for property acquisition.
Make the motion, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. Can I have a second?
Daniel Finger, a second.
Daniel, call the roll, please, Bill.
James Art?
Yes.
Robert Baron?
Yes.
Dwight Douglas?
Yes.
Daniel Finger?
Yes.
Yamena Franchella?
Yes.
Holly Hasbrook?
Yes.
Richard Hyman?
Yes.
Bernie Tomes?
Yes.
Beanie Toback?
Yes.
Vincent Kopicki? Or Nat Federici?
Yes.
Um, Kathy O'Connor?
Yes.
Q. Grecian or Gail Katzman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, okay, the last item on our agenda is magistrate board information. Moving forward, development of NIMTIC's Next Regional Transportation Plan.
Richard, we just need to ask the question of our guest Jerry Bogatz, whether he's going to have enough time to do his presentation? Cause I understand he need, he also needs to leave at 10:00. So, Jerry, do you, we've got 18 minutes. Does that work for you? Or do you want to hold off until probably the March meeting?
Yeah, um, Commissioner, hi, uh, Happy New Year, everybody. Um, it's a good point, and, uh, and I think given everyone's time constraints, including my own, it, it, uh, it's fine with me to, if this is tabled to a future meeting.
Okay, I, I'd, I'd rather do it justice and give everybody time to be able to interact with you and ask questions. So, um, if you don't mind, I'd prefer to hold you off till, we have a very busy meeting already for February, if you heard my introduction earlier. So, if we could hold you off till March, that would make more sense.
That's, that's great from, from my end, so thank you.
Okay, well, at least you didn't have to drive all the way to White Plains to find out.
I would have taken the bus. I would have taken the bus.
Ah, very good. Okay, do we have any other business? Norma, Bill, any other business?
Nope.
Uh, okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, have a second.
Second, Kathy.
Okay, I heard everyone in favor. Very much, everyone stay well. See you next month.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Bye-bye.
Take care.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Thanks, guys.